...people believe is a great success, I certainly do. We've really not had the right opportunity or even afforded to manage or the opportunity to thank so many people within the school, within the city administration for their good work and for your good work. And so, on behalf of a grateful community, I really wanted to, and on behalf of the council, express our appreciation to, again, to the city manager and all of your staff and everybody I know who was a team effort from beginning to end. And it was also, it took a lot of management skill. And also, I didn't get the opportunity the other night, Bernard, to thank you appropriately. I always seem to skip by that, but I'm sorry. The legal advice we got and the work you've done, not only with pulling many parts together contractually, but also with the Slover Foundation, has been much appreciated. So, I want you to know how much we appreciate the great role you've played in this as well. I've asked Harry Lester to come tonight. As you know, Harry is employee of the Slover Foundation. He is the president of the foundation, in fact. And he's been very involved in trying to pull the many parts, public and private, and old and new, together here to make all of this work in harmony. And he's done a great job of that. In many ways, the council has, this is a deja vu moment for us. The Seaboard Building was actually built in 1900. It was a courthouse and a post office when it was opened. Later, in 1935, it became City Hall. And it remained City Hall until we moved over to the new building, Breck, which is, Breck tells me there's 50 years and six months today, if anybody's keeping track of that stuff, but it's over 50 years ago. Now, 50 years later, we have returned here to hold a council meeting, and I think it's certainly appropriate in light of the new opening. I learned this morning that the Seaboard Building, when the city council, when the City Hall moved, was put on the market, there were three or four really serious bids, including Henderson and Phillips, and, well, not Henderson, well, maybe Henderson and Phillips. No, in fact, it turned over a couple of times after that, but eventually, the Central Fidelity Bank actually made a bid on the building. And when they didn't get it, when Henderson and Phillips got the building, about 30 years ago, I guess it was, then they became the anchor tenant for the World Trade Center. So, this has been, this property here has spawned a lot of really important things in the community, which, when the Town Point Center in downtown was open, then that really drove the revitalization, serious money coming back in to downtown. So, again, Marcus, Bernard, Ron, Dave, I mean, everybody, Laurie, I mean, everybody, Sonal, obviously, now, who the library is in such good hands, thank you for all of that. Kathy, the role that you played in pulling it together, maybe, Marcus, you want to mention some other names, I'm not sure, but I'd like Harry to come up and talk to us for two or three minutes about how the opening weekend goes and what you see for the future.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council.
Yeah, good.
Some of you may not know me very well. My office was once on Main Street before the Marriott Hotel was built, and later it was on Plume Street, on the Plume Street side of Monticello Arcade. I was here for the first Harbor Fest, and I was president of the DNDC, which came before the DNC. I mean, Grammy Street was a mall. Later on, I spent eight years on the campus of EVMS, so I'm no stranger to downtown Norfolk. But what I witnessed last weekend at the new Slover Library was the best yet. It didn't just happen. It started with the city appropriately embracing light rail with an alignment that required the site of our main library. It was followed by, this is important, Mayor Paul Frame being bold and visionary, asking Frank Batten to consider financially supporting a new library. That was followed by Frank and Jane Batten being bold and visionary by making a gift of $40 million to build the best new library anywhere. Late last spring, Jane Batten asked me to assist the Slover Library Foundation in making sure that the Slover became our village green, a place to convene for thoughtful purposes, a place to engage the public in a variety of important activities, a place like no other in Hampton Roads. And of course, when Jane asked me, I was flattered, but I was also clueless, so I agreed to take that job. And now, I'm thrilled to be a part of something so special. As I said, it didn't just happen. Ray Gendros had the concept. The architects applied their magic to connect a 115-year-old Seaboard Building to a new six-story tower with a three-story glass atrium. I showed up just in time to see it all come together. Now, here's the good part. The city of Norfolk staff. That's the city manager, Marcus Jones, and his team, Ron Williams, Winter Bendah, David Sullivan, Kathy Groop, Randy Thompson, and many more, were all so good at their jobs. They built a magnificent building. And then, the library staff, led by Sonal Restoggi, showed up to turn the beautiful building into an extraordinary library, one that houses the very important Sergeant Memorial Collection, 160,000 books, 130 public computers, the children's floor for the stars, technology coming out of our ears in this amazing sixth floor, just waiting for good things to happen, like the democracy we're enjoying today with the city council meeting here. So, and I might note, through all this, the mayor was here all along. It seemed like he was here every day. So, please, council members, be proud of your team. The Slover Library Foundation hired the marketing firm Otto, whose offices are on Colley Avenue in Norfolk, to work with the city and library public relations people. And wow, last weekend, the Slover opened to over 13,000 people. Mayor, thank you for being bold enough to ask, and to the Batten family, thank you for being so generous. I am proud to be part of the latest example of what makes Norfolk a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Thanks a lot. Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything? I'm going to ask Sonal to come up with, you've got to say something.
Okay.
You have to be very, I mean, you may never get a chance to open a book.
To mayor, members of council, we talk about Team Norfolk often, and we talk about neighbors, building neighborhoods, and that government can't do it all. And I believe that this is one of the greatest examples of coming together as a community, coming together as a team, no one really of being first or no one being last, but literally pushing together for one goal. I can't begin to think that the staff, as Harry said, Sonal gets to have a lot of fun with the programming, but I will tell you that I don't know who received the most calls from the mayor as he drove past us on his way home each day, whether it was me, or Ron, or David, or Winter, but we're very proud, and we hope that this is just the beginning of delivering special places to you in the city.
Well, thank you, Marcus. I also want to add that one wonderful side benefit of 13,000 people down here over a weekend who might not have otherwise come is, you know, a not insignificant amount of economic activity that occurred as well, all over with the restaurants in downtown and other venues. So, that was, obviously, that will be a positive impact of this new library. So, Sonal Restoggi, the director of libraries for the city, has done a great job in getting this thing ready for the public and to serve as the real library, the main library for the community. So, Sonal.
So, welcome to the beautiful Slover Library, Honorable Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Angela Williams, city council member, city manager, and many other attendees. It is my honor and pleasure to share with you a few unique features of this beautiful library. I have handed out a presentation to you, if you want to follow through. Slover really is a vital center for community learning, leading-edge technology, and civic engagement. This building is 138,000 square feet and encompasses the historic Seaboard Building, the Selden Arcade, and a new six-story tower that connects them all. We are standing here in this beautiful place. Mayor alluded to, and Harry Lester alluded to this, we had a great, successful opening weekend, and we had over 13,000 people attend. All our floors were jam-packed, our second floor was a beaming success. We had over 2,600 people attend the events scheduled during grand opening. Thank you. I'm going to get to my slide here. This included youth, teen, and all adult programs. As far as what the library features in terms of our collection, we have over 160,000 books and all sorts of resources and ebooks, e-magazines, and what have you. Here is a breakdown of what our collection consists of. So, adult fiction, adult nonfiction, juvenile children's material, DVDs and audio. Sergeant Memorial Collection actually encompasses about 40,000 volumes, teen collection of 5,000, and not to mention, again, ebooks and e-resources that are available. The Sergeant Memorial Collection is the premier source for local history and genealogy resources. The collection boasts an extensive collection of images, maps, directories, newspapers, and historical books. This collection also touts a very highly dedicated and knowledgeable staff in genealogy, historic buildings, regional history, and digital archiving. History of the region truly comes to life in the SMC Interactive Gallery with iTouch wall and table screens that provide access to historic images dating back to the early Now, about the second floor and the most exciting floor that we saw over the weekend, the second floor of the Slover Wing is home to the Youth Library and Kids Zone. This floor is filled with fun and unique spaces for parents and children, making this a true destination to our community. Kids Zone features toys and play equipment that encourages playful discovery, stimulates early literacy, and enhances learning for children ages three to five. We also have a beautiful playscape that is geared towards zero to two years of age with developmentally appropriate play equipment. Art Studio, this is a large space which looks somewhat like a small art classroom, and this provides great and perfect opportunity for us to partner with D. Art Studio and Chrysler so that cross-programming and promotion can take place. There's a beautiful children's program room where all our offerings for a variety of ages take place, and all are free and open to the public. Computers, a computer area just for kids. Early literacy games and educational games for school-age children are available on computers and tablets in this area. Now, on the teen floor, which is our fifth floor, we offer several areas for adults and teens to congregate, to study, and fifth floor has truly become a learning commons as we saw over the weekend. We saw a variety of people sit through the tables, be in the gaming lounge, and enjoy the gaming stations over the weekend. In keeping with the vision of Slover being the most high-tech library, it provides public with over 130 public access computers that customers can use for up to two hours a day free of charge. The Digital Media Lab on the third floor that features Mac computers with software for graphic design and video editing, a 3D printer and a large format printer. And there are a variety of classes that we'll be offering for public for all skill levels. They include basic computer skills, Microsoft Office Programs, Adobe Software, social media classes, and basic Mac skill classes. This library also provides free Wi-Fi. Throughout the building, you will find digital displays that provide access to the library catalog, shows you how to get around the new library, and provides information on community and regional events. To that extent, we have seven interactive wayfinding displays, several online catalog displays, one media wall, eight computer lab displays, and 14 iTouch wall and table Last but not the least, Slover is proud to boast a great café with cuisine at Slover. It's a 52-seat bistro. We also have a great retail area and gift shop, and a digital production studio that has green screen and video equipment. So, with that, I conclude my presentation. Mayor Frame, if I may have this opportunity to recognize
Sure.
...our wonderful staff that put together not only months and months of service to be being where we are, but also, just in the opening day weekend, they all rocked. So, please, if you all would stand up, on behalf of Slover.
And your new library manager?
Yes. Cynthia C. is our Slover manager.
Cynthia is, was previously at the Print Lo, right, and is doing a great job here already, so, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, David Sullivan, who is, whose job was to make sure this library is, was, is the most technologically advanced in the country.
Thank you, mayor and members of council, and everyone here. As the mayor said, the Frank Batten Sr.'s vision was to have the most technologically advanced library. And if you're a technologist, that is a tough bill to fulfill, because technology is moving so fast that you're only the most advanced for a brief moment in time. And I can tell you, at this brief moment in time, I think we are the most advanced technology-driven library anywhere. So, I'm going to quickly kind of just recap some of the technology. Sonal hit on some parts, so I'll kind of skip over some of those. But basically, there's two, there's three parts to the technology. There's everything that faces the patrons, the people who use the library. There are the internal communication and technologies to support the library and its functioning from a day-to-day basis. And finally, this building is completely driven by technology from a security and building control aspect. It's the most automated building that the city has. Patron-facing technology, we have a lot of things. Sonal hit a number of those. We have eight different public computing labs. We have a digital media lab with the star of the weekend, I think, was the 3D printer. More people came in and wanted to see a small little box that is a 3D printer that people will be able to print on and pay just the material cost. So, it's a real, it's a real hot technology, and I think people are really interested, and we're eager to teach people about it and actually let them get their hands on one. We also have wide-format printers for printing photographs and posters. We have a computer training room. The library staff has a whole program of computer classes conducted through there. We have public Wi-Fi throughout the building, including over in the café, and 30 access points, we can literally support hundreds and hundreds of simultaneous connections. The touch-driven displays everywhere, all the technology is the latest touch-driven displays. So, the card catalogs are not the, not a computer, they're not the old card catalogs, they're a touch-driven display, no keyboard, and I think they did really well over our weekend. One of the features is the media wall, which you see downstairs in the forum. It's a large 15-foot-high screen. I went by Saturday night, late, after leaving Chrysler Hall, and I was just amazed from Plume Street, seeing the large historic images of downtown Norfolk that are clearly visible from the street on that big display. So, I think it really brings the library alive even when it's closed. So, we have a lot of access, and probably, the, one of the features that many people are talking about is what we've called our iWall technology, which is showcasing the Sergeant Memorial Collection's photographic archive. Those are a whole series of touchscreens. This is kind of a compilation of some photographs of the technology. But if you notice, all the way down in the lower right-hand corner, there's a young man on one of our touchtables right inside the door, and he is literally playing it like a piano, which is something we hadn't envisioned when we designed the technology, but it really held up well with a lot of use and was a very popular location during the opening weekend. And again, you can see the technology, at least in my mind, is not only significant, it's also beautiful, just like the building. We have the gaming rooms, the video production room, which you saw a picture of, where people can come in and produce their own video. We have group study rooms. So, we have seven group study rooms where you can come in, hook four or five laptops, iPads, any combination thereof, and collaborate. These are very popular in university libraries around the country, and I think they'll be very popular in our library as kids work collaboratively on projects today. The community engagement room, which we're standing in, you can kind of see, we were able to support, we're video from here, so this is a very high-tech room, able to support a lot of different kinds of meetings, including webcasting directly from here to the rest of the world. Sonal talked about our digital signage. We also have RFID, radio frequency ID tags on all the materials in the entire library system, along with self-service checkout. That's a feature many libraries have, but I think in Hampton Roads, we are the only ones with full self-service checkout, including pay stations where people can pay for their charges for printing or any fines they may have, and really leave the library without having any interaction with the staff or any kind of queue. Conference rooms throughout, we have dozens of rooms, all of them have the latest technology for display. And one of the things that's significant about this, and it's a function of the Slover Foundation, is they have created an endowment, a $10 million endowment, to help keep our technology current and refreshed. We wouldn't be able to even contemplate a building like this without an endowment to keep the technology current. So, that's what's going to allow this building to remain on the leading edge. Again, you can see some of the features, the iWall in the middle right, gaming stations. You're going to see a presentation from Bill Eng right after me, which is going to be much more interesting than mine, but there's a picture of him doing a presentation here on Sunday in the room that was well-attended. And of course, our green screen video production room up at the top, which many people are anxious to get their hands on. There's a lot of back-office technology. I'm not going to go through all of it, except to say, we don't have a building like this with this kind of technology in it. We've never had one till this week, and as of two weeks from now, we will have two. So, the courthouse has all the same security systems, building control systems, controlled lighting systems, all of that is built in to both of these buildings at a very high level. And again, one of the things, the lighting control, all the lighting in this building is LED-based, it's all computer-controlled, the rooms are set, there are multiple scenes. You can see from the pictures, some of the different lighting scenes. On Friday night, we had the purple lighting scene, both inside and outside the building. We have a more traditional lighting scene that's used on other days. And even the Seaboard Building has a remarkable skylight atrium area with all those lights are LED-based and fully controlled by a computer. So, with that, I'll wrap up, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just want to say, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part, and hopefully, we have delivered on the challenge that you accepted from Frank Batten Sr. I certainly feel like we have.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Great, that's a great presentation. All right, and now, William Eng is here to talk about the Sergeant Memorial Collection as well. Thanks very much.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, members of the city council. My name is Bill Eng, and I'm with the Sergeant Memorial Collection. 150 years ago, much of the property where the present-day Slover Library sits today was either underwater or was a creek bed. This is a postcard view of the intersection of Granby Street and City Hall Avenue from 1868. The old stone bridge in the foreground was right at the intersection. The view is looking west toward Portsmouth, and the brick house in the background is where the present-day Law Building stands. Now, by 1898, that had all been filled in, Plume Street had been developed, and the building in the foreground, the Academy of Music, built in 1880, was on the site of the present-day Selden Arcade. If you notice, behind the academy, it was mostly residential, and you also see a street to the right called Dodd's Lane. And on one of those buildings beside it was one of the offices of the Norfolk Virginian, which was a predecessor of our Virginian Pilot Newspaper. And here's a view of the Academy of Music from around 1890. And then, in 1899, in January of that year, construction began on our U.S. courthouse and post office. The architectural firm of Wyatt and Knowlting of Baltimore won the commission, and the building was completed in December of 1900 at a cost of $170,000. That was minus the roughly $13,000 that was needed for a central heating system. And then, a classic Harry C. Mann photograph of our building from circa 1908. And another Harry Mann photograph, an aerial view taken from the old National Bank of Commerce from around 1915. The large building in the foreground is the Academy of Music, and if you see behind it, you still have the old homes still standing. And by 1902, the fronts of those homes had been converted into storefronts. And here is a view on Plume Street. This is where the Selden Arcade would be situated today. The building to the left is the Seaboard Fire Insurance Building, built in 1906, which in effect replaced Dodd's Lane and all the homes that were formerly there. And then, an aerial view from 1922 with the Academy of Music in the foreground and the courthouse building. Now, on April 4th, 1930, fire struck the Academy of Music, and it was completely destroyed. The Grandy Estate, which owned the property, began in September of that year with the construction of the Selden Arcade, named for Dr. William Selden, who had purchased the land where the building stood in 1843. Construction of the Selden Arcade began in September, and it was completed in April of 1931 at a cost of $200,000. The building featured 22 stores inside, five stores on Plume Street, and five more on Main Street. And here is the completed arcade from 1932, which hosted an automobile show. Now, the U.S. courthouse and post office occupied our building until 1934, when they moved to the new building, which is now the Walter P. Hoffman Courthouse. The city was able to purchase this building from the federal government three years later, and in 1938, City Hall moved in the building. And here is a view taken right after City Hall moved in. I do not know, but I can find that out for you. And here is Norfolk's engineering department busy at work in 1938. And you wouldn't have City Hall without residents paying fees. And this was taken on the first floor in 1951. And a view of Plume Street showing the Selden Arcade and the Seaboard Fire Insurance Building. Now, by the early '50s, City Hall was running out of room, and it was still a good 10 or 15 years before the present City Hall building was built. So, in 1953, the city purchased the Seaboard Insurance Building and demolished it, and the following year, built this building, the new City Hall Annex, which, including architects' fees, cost $180,000. City Hall used this space until 1965, when they moved in the present building. The old City Hall building was turned over to Social Services, and they occupied it until the late '70s, when it was sold, and then redeveloped in the early 1980s. Now, in the mid-'70s, the existing Selden Arcade received a new front to bring it up to date, but since then, it has now been restored back to the original 1931 appearance. This photograph is from Carol Walker, whom we are proud to say we have all of his photographs in the Sergeant Memorial Collection. The construction of the new Slover Library began in earnest with the purchase of the High Page Building, which was in the former City High Page Building, which was in the former city hall annex, and in being demolished here in nine, in two thousand and ten. And then construction of the New Slover Tower, this photograph taken by my coworker, Troy Valas. And the home of the Sergeant Memorial Collection, the second floor in the former Seaboard Building, and our completed buildings today. And does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
That was great. Thank you, Bill. Okay, any, um, that is, that concludes the presentation. Marcus, unless you have something else?
Again, just on behalf of the council, I want to thank everybody. Bill, your, the, the touchscreens, every, I mean, it's, people just come and stay, they don't leave. I mean, it's amazing, even though we don't know how to do it, but, but it's, it's, it's a great asset, so, thank you, and, and, uh, and again, thanks to all the staff. So what we'll, what we're going to do, I guess, Marcus, is take a break. Well, we're, we have a photographer here, we're going to, council's going to go downstairs and take a picture. You know, we've been trying to get a group picture for months since Andy brought it up, and some of you have been running from that, but everybody's here, so we'll get everybody in the picture, maybe on the stairs, or if somebody's got a better idea, we, we can do that. Stairs are nice, okay, Laurie? And then maybe we'll get one with Marcus in it, too.
No.
Then we'll come back up, and we'll just eat over here. Okay.
Um, I will tell you...